United States of America, the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, everything, just for all.
Full call, please.
Censor.
Here.
So. Ostergaard.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Approval of the agenda. Discussion? Yeah, you do what's behind your lap cap.
Okay.
Yeah.
Full call, please.
It'll be a long day. Ostergaard.
I'm sorry, what was?
Approval of the agenda.
Yes. Too much discussion between the time.
Wilson.
Censor. Yes.
Yes.
Milburn. Question carried. Public comment. Is there any public comment?
I'm Dave Shinman. We're starting this meeting at eight thirty. We can't even get in the door until eight thirty. Just so you guys know.
We should leave, yeah, we should leave public comment open for.
Well, there's another section.
Thank you. This first.
They're supposed to have the doors open at eight.
They wouldn't let us.
On eight on today. So we'll, we'll get with them, make sure that they know.
It's supposed to be open early.
Yeah. I have a feeling he didn't realize there was an eight thirty meeting, so. Oh.
That's because I come in the back door.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Our delegated authority with us via Zoom. Lake St. Helen.
All right. We, I think the last week, we got five to seven inches of rain on St. Helen. So I was working on draining that down. I recently got that into. Opened that center bay. Got that lowered to lake level. I think we're still like three quarters of an inch high. But closed back up that center bay. I'm just using side base to drain that now. And, and I believe we're going to be talking about the S A D. In the ten o'clock meeting, but that's as far as what's going on with St. Helen unless there's any questions.
Any questions on Lake St. Helen? Holton Lake.
Um. Holton Lake, I think is a quarter inch to like an eighth of an inch below legal lake level right now. It just matters which way the wind's blowing, but we're right at legal lake level at Holton Lake and. That's. That's about it on Holton Lake.
Um, I believe tomorrow is the last day for prepayments. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, tomorrow's the last day. And then for prepayments, I'm accepting. If it was like a posting date of tomorrow, if they come in a little later, I don't want to be turning away any prepayments.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Chase.
Yep.
Um. Hi-Fi.
Yes.
When's that going to be so we can have it on our website?
When that, when's that going to be? I guess what, what are you talking about?
Well. We need to have information on our website about lake levels from Hi-Fi. And also. They were supposed to get it set up so anybody that subscribed, they could have an email sent to them. Is that clear?
Yep. I can, I will reach out to Brandon. I'll give him a call today. And then I will, I will include you and early anyone else in that email that wants to be included about. About how to do that.
Okay. Also, on another lake, I need to have the coordinates of where the. Sensors are to go so I can get back with Brandon on that.
Oh, gotcha. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question goes back to Lake St. Helen. Is Hi-Fi going to be on Lake St. Helen also, Chase?
Yeah, they have one gauge right now at the, at the lake level control structure.
Well, thanks.
Yep.
Higgins Lake. Resignation of the delegated authority. Shepkey Consulting LLC. On August second, twenty twenty four, we received an email from the delegated authority Shepkey Consulting LLC. Terminating his services immediately on Higgins Lake. Since that email, I've spent several hours talking with Shepkey Consulting, trying to figure out what the county could do to keep them. It was made very clear that Shepkey Consulting LLC has no desire to continue on for Higgins Lake. The main reason for this was the lawsuit that was filed in federal court against Roscommon County Board of Commissioners. Shepkey Consulting LLC and Chase Shepkey himself. The lawsuit was filed by Gregory C. Matt, Bruce Carlton, and Charles Wayne Brooks. The way the contract read for Shepkey Consulting LLC was that at any time either party could basically walk away. As it was an outwell contract. That being said, Shepkey Consulting has and is being very helpful in keeping Commissioner Wilson and myself informed. About what he has done up to this point. With his resignation of Shepkey Consulting LLC. It is my recommendation at this time that the entirety of this board of commissioners be in charge of Higgins Lake. Lake level control structure. At this time, all gates are closed and they will remain that way until we hit the court order's legal level.
I have some comments.
Okay.
I did a conversation yesterday with Jody Valentino. She's not here today. But the gist of the conversation was we're trying to figure out a way to have Chase covered. And as he is, I believe, the lone person running for drain commissioner. At the point in time when he gets. I guess is brought on board as drain commissioner. That automatically, the delegated authority position by law automatically reverts to the delegated authority and we can or name him. Okay. And then he would be covered under our insurance policy, which would alleviate the problem that we're having. Right now. And in fact, Jody, and you guys might want to talk with Jody. I don't know if she's talked with any of you about it since her and I talked yesterday. She's going to try to work on maybe doing something sooner because right now. The default person that's going to now be sued is the current drain commissioner because that default position automatically goes to the drain commissioner for delegated authority. On, on the lakes. I don't know if you know that or not, but that's, that's.
When I talk to Jody, it's if we named her. We have not named her as the delegated authority.
By statute, it automatically falls to her.
I would have to look into that because that is not what I was informed of.
Well.
Yes.
I'd be in drain commissioner for seven years. Have never seen any such thing in a nineteen fifty six drain code from Michigan.
Not in the drain code.
Then you can't force a green commissioner to do it.
Don't take my word for it. Ask your attorney. Also, she said that she was going to talk to Matt Zeluski, our attorney. To have our attorney contact. Mr. C Max's attorney. To see what they can get worked out so the situation can get resolved. So Chase is completely, you know, out of the. Issues of being sued and so forth. So. That, that is something that might happen rather quickly. I'm hoping and because we have mediation going on right now. The whole thing could be resolved in mediation, I might want to add. So I mean, I think we don't have to wait till the first of the year. I think we can act on this rather quickly. Because Chase is a valuable, valuable person to have on board for all of our lakes. And has done an excellent job. And I think we need to do everything that we can in the county's power. To get him back. On board as the delegated authority. So. Maybe something can be done along those lines. Maybe not, but I think we all need to talk about it and in, you know, have Matt. Zeluski, as Jody mentioned, she's got a closer relationship with us than us. Have him approach Mr. C Max's attorney to see what can be done to get the situation resolved.
I just hope the damage hasn't been done and Chase saying he still doesn't want nothing to do with that lake. Can't force him.
Well, well, if he becomes. If he becomes drain commissioner, it automatically defaults to him. You, you can ask Mr. Zeluski. That's, that's, that's the person to ask.
Anybody else? Um, the appointment of board of commissioners for the purpose of Higgins Lake level oversight under existing structure abilities. Again, I believe this board should be the ones to oversee the control structure currently. I stated earlier that all gates are closed and will remain that way until the legal level is hit. At that time, what I would like to see happen is that we, as a board, will determine with board majority. How to open gates and lower the water until it hits legal limit again. This most likely from talking with Shepkey Consulting LLC would not incur until spring unless we have some sort of major rain event.
I'd like to see that on a motion.
Madam Chair, I have to recuse myself of this because I am currently involved in the lawsuit against the county, so can't sue myself. So I'll have to recuse myself as far as voting. But, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the board, you know, taking it over. I'd have no problem at all with that. And I can't vote.
Other discussion? No, because it automatically falls to us. That's just how I kind of would like to see.
Is this going to entail naming a person in charge of monitoring the lake level?
No.
Okay.
As a board.
I, I would like to add that today. Higgins Lake is three point seven two inches below its legal level. Well, well below the legal level.
With all the gates closed.
Yes. We all know what the problem is. And it's not a county problem. I want to add that. This is not a county problem. This is an eagle problem.
Well, we could go put another board in the spillway.
I apologize, Rex. I can't hear you.
They say we could put a board in the spillway.
Yeah, I know where the one is. Could help a little bit, not much, but a little bit.
Unfinished business. Currently, we don't have anything there. Motions and resolutions. Currently, there are none at this time. So we are back to public comment. Or any public comment? Mine up.
Green light's on, does that mean?
That means it's on and ready to go.
That means my time started.
No, not till you start.
I'll do this for you. I waited in line to get in.
I'm sorry, we're going to have a conversation.
And walked directly here in the meeting and already started. I believe the Open Meetings Act says I should be here. I was here before. I was held up at the. The gate. You need to adjust your time so we can get in, in here. We couldn't get in any earlier.
We just bring that up.
Pardon?
That was brought up before you did arrive. They were supposed to start letting people in by eight o'clock. Why they did not, I don't know, but we will have a conversation with them regarding that.
I guess I think that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
In lieu of that, Madam Chair, I would suggest that we give Mr. Cotterman two five-minute periods because he missed the first public comments if he so desires. I mean, that would be, that would alleviate any problem. With any, any violation of the Open Meetings Act.
I think I should have a lot more now.
Well, you only get two five-minute periods.
Okay. I'm just giving you a rough time, Eric.
Don't give me a rough time.
Again, the acoustics in here is horrible. Mr. Wilson was speaking and it was reverberating back and forth. I think people have complained. Over and over again about the not being able to hear. Again, I looked at the lake level gauge on Shepkey. Reporting site. It has the, the outlet where the USGS gauge is. He's got that on his website. We did put an extra one in on East Bay to. Look at the wind driven tides, the seashifat. It's important data. It's, it's installed, but it's not up and running. We paid for it. That was probably three months ago, four months ago, and that gauge still isn't in operation. And the data on the Shepkey. Is pretty much worthless. I don't even know what the access are. You got the height and the width. I, I know it's seven days is there, but I don't know how the. How there's one point three or one point nine, how it represents to the. Legal lake level of Holton Lake. It's a completely worthless data. And again, the USGS site. Has what thirty plus years of data on it. When we go to. Get into the mix when it comes to. Re, reevaluating the whole Lake, Lake level, this USGS data is going to be quite important. You can see how many times the lake is flooded. You see. Where the lows and the highs are at. You can see what the averages are. Average springtime elevations are ten inches above normal. Average July. Data shows six inches above normal. This, this data will be needed when we. Do the lake level adjustment that I think is coming down the path here. I don't follow Facebook, but my wife printed this off for me. It's a. And it says, this is David Russo. He says, I agree with you, Darlene. Censor, for the, for ten years, I used common sense and banked water to allow for evaporation. Everybody was happy. I was threatened with a personal lawsuit if I banked water. I am so glad that Senate Bill six, six, two has passed. And Terry Michaels, David Russo, can you explain the process under six, six, two to raise the lake level, raise the level? Again, Mr. Russo replies, basically like I did for several years. Use common sense. We had a dry spell coming up with no rain. We're going to allow to bank water. For evaporation. I used to bank six plus inches of water every summer because I knew. At the end of July and didn't print that. Mr. Russo says he's banked six plus inches of water. Because of what Mr., because of what Mr. Russo did, we've had damage to our shoreline, to our home. As many other people have. When the floods come, they do far more damage. Mr. Russo is actually responsible. First, people here knew Mr. Russo was banking water. Mark Milburn says, one time he told me, it's, it's like driving, driving your car down the expressway. Nobody travels seventy. He says they always go a lot faster, so. But anyway, this threat, we live in fear of people like you. Floods are a scary thing. I got some videos of what happens when the storms come and the lake levels at flood stage. It's damaged our boats. It's taken our docks away. We replaced most of the rim joists on our cabins. I believe this is kind of where we're headed with the, the petition that said they had the two thirds boats now. I believe you intend to use special assessment funds. To manage the new lake level. Got a copy of the suit. Guess what? Six sixty-two. I don't know. There's enough people at Holton Lake. With damage from floods. That there could be a class action lawsuit. You should be held accountable. You did illegal things and you damaged people's property. Everyone on this board at the time knew that Mr. Russo was banking water. I said, at the board at that time. You know they were banking water as well. You actually stated that you were amazed that nobody ever did anything to stop. What Mr. Russo was doing. And prior to him. They were banking, I think, ten inches of water. Carl Geiger, he banked ten inches of water. But you banked this six and you banked this ten, but then when the rain comes and that we get more rain. You don't take the boards out till we're at flood stage. You know, we can be swimming where I live. And there's still boards in the dam. Anyway. Thank you.
Any other public comment? With no further public comment, we will adjourn this meeting and our next meeting will start at. Nine o'clock. A board of commissioners work session, August fourteenth, twenty twenty four at nine AM. First, we have the Roscommon County Agreement for Services to the aging twenty twenty four to twenty thirty-one. No, we're on work session.
We're moving very log, Rex.
Yeah. Their contract. And this is a discussion of the whole. We all got the contract to read over. Does anybody have questions or input that they would like?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Um. I believe Commissioner Milburn is our liaison person with these. With the Commission on Aging. And I'd like to ask that. We contact them and see if there's something we can do with wording in this contract to encourage. People to be able to take meals home on weekends. And, you know, since he's our liaison, let Mr. Milburn handle that.
I would agree with that. Yes.
If you may, she may be able to illuminate some of those questions.
Anybody else have anything?
No, I agree with that.
Okay.
Would you like to?
When is that gonna happen, Mark? I was just gonna say.
Well, Madam Chair, Deborah's here today. If she's so willing, she could maybe illuminate some of those questions right now.
Okay. If she, if she would like to, that's up to her.
You gotta talk up. You gotta talk up.
Everybody move your microphones closer to you.
Mike.
Mike, Mike.
Rex, would you please restate the questions for Deborah Looney to hear them, please?
Yes, I will. I'd like our liaison person, Commissioner Milburn, to talk with the Commission on Aging. And see if there's some verbiage we can put in this contract or encourage. Trying to achieve a program where people can take meals home on weekends.
I will speak with Mr. Milburn. Thanks, Rex. Thank you.
Anything else for anybody who saw in the contract that you want to talk about? Okay. E nine one one, public safety. Peace out. Jessica Gilbert.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I also have Brian Blument here with me. He's from Central Square. If you guys have any questions, he's here and willing to answer them.
We had another chair. Would you like to sit up here? I could wheelchair over here.
I came from Mitchell's Park. So the project that we have today was presented to the nine one one authority board yesterday and was asked there. So it's a central square replacement project for our current Viper and Intrado home system. It handles all nine one one and admin lines for the center. This project will include the replacement of the nine one one servers in the back room and our five screens at the workstations on the floor. The current equipment is aging and nearing end of life. Average lifespan for the equipment ran twenty four seven is five to seven years. Equipment was installed in twenty seventeen. From my understanding, less than a year after install, it took a lightning strike. Ever since then, we have had quirks in the system that they have not been able to fix. Unknown why. It's just there. We have replaced five to six fans on our servers in the back room since the install in twenty seventeen. One of them was just replaced in January of this year. The cost on that was just over four thousand dollars. Currently, there is another fan going. I'm hoping to be able to limp along until October when the install on the current central square happens. We have three other counties that are with us on this project. Alpena being one of them. That is our backup center. They have already approved and started the process of replacing their existing system. The cost on this project is a hundred and fifty eight thousand, which we do have budgeted in capital planning. And the forty five thousand a year after that for five years is also budgeted in our service contracts.
We had an authority board meeting yesterday and we all voted to move forward and bring it to this board.
Does anybody have any questions for Jessica regarding this? Okay, so next meeting then, we'll make sure that there's a motion on there for you guys. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment that she's new in this position and I appreciate working right on things and getting things done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the twenty.
I told her I had a time. I would come up and sit with her.
The twenty twenty-five Priority Health Premium Increase.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so I don't know. Be able to make it today via Zoom. I'm not sure if she's on there or not, but if not, that's okay. So back in May, we met with our third party administrators, advantage benefit group. With Jennifer Pedersen and Kate, I'm sorry, McMillan. She was just married back then, so I always want to call her by her last name, but. But Kate McMillan. So they gave us a, an update that just kind of like a, hey, heads up. You guys are trending pretty high. Lot of our groups are getting some pretty high renewals. Thirty percent, forty percent, and you guys are trending very, very high. So we would not be surprised if you guys get. At least a twenty-five, if not higher, percent increase on your premiums for this year. So we wanted to give you a heads up. So of course, you know, Jody and I were anticipating a pretty high increase. So I was not anticipating the phone call though when Jennifer called me. That we unfortunately are looking at a fifty percent increase in our health insurance premiums for this next year. For twenty twenty-five. Priority Health has been very adamant. That this is our increase. There is not much that we can do outside of very. Drastic plan changes that will. Change this increase. You know, their, their stance is that we are, our utilization is very high. We have been. Well into the over a hundred, if not two hundred percent utilization rate. For several months, if not. For several months, if not more than a year. So we're just using our health insurance a bit as a group. And they want some money back, basically. So that being said, um, we are coming to you and letting you know that we are going to have to look at. You guys are gonna have to look at, um, all of us collectively. Some different options about what we're going to be able to do to keep a. High benef-, you know, a very good benefit package. We've always been, um. Proud of the benefit package that we've been able to offer to the employees. It's been something that has been a retainer for a lot of employees. You know, our wages, we've tried to keep at least average and. A lot of people have expressed that, um, the benefit packages are why they've stayed. Um, and I understand that, but obviously fifty percent is, um, a, a giant increase. So we're gonna, um, a lot of us are just gonna have to put our heads together and try to figure out what, what we can do. Um, Jennifer and her team did try to come up with a couple of different things. Um, and a couple of different offerings. So just to kind of give everybody a little bit of an idea of what the fifty percent looks like in dollar amount. Currently, um, we're budgeted for one million eight hundred sixty six thousand one hundred and twenty three dollars and eighteen cents. Um, for our health insurance. Fifty percent basically puts us at an increase of nine hundred and fifty three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. So just under a million dollars that we would have to come up with to keep everything status quo. Now, mind you, the HRA that we utilize to pay for the deductibles for employees. That does not have any impact on premiums. It does not have any, and also is not included in that one point eight million dollars. It's, it's on the side. And so that also is trending high. Last, this year, they actually had an annual estimated spend of three hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, the renewal was, would be estimated at three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. We're actually trending right now higher than the current. And we're almost to the renewal rate. We are trending right now to be about three hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars of HRA spend this year, which is almost to the renewal, the fifty percent renewal. So, um, we are definitely utilizing and we're definitely paying in that HRA spend. So, um, our, that has been routinely, our strategy has been, let's try to assume the liability into that HRA. So try to keep the deductible high, um, that will keep our premiums lower. Um, and that we're, that we're no longer able to utilize that strategy because not only are we. You literally spending money out of that, but we don't really have much more to go. There is a little bit, we can go up a little bit, but it's the priority has said that's really not going to make a huge difference. And, um, plus, we're probably gonna continue to spend out of that. So, um, there's a couple of different off options that they did throw at us. I'm not gonna go too much into detail because they haven't given a lot of detail to us, but there are a couple of different things that they have said. That we could, there's, could be, um, there's a couple of qualified plans that we could utilize. Basically, a qualified plan, it's called that because the IRS, um. Has a definition of what a qualified plan is because it utilizes a health savings account. Um, and so the health savings account would be money that, um, the county could contribute into this health savings account then. That would be for each employee to be able to utilize that amount of money, um. To pay for deductibles and such. Then, like I said, the qualified means that the IRS has the limit about what we could put into that on HSA. So that's what the term qualified means. So that is a potential option. Another potential option is to utilize a hard cap. We're actually right now with where we're standing with the union plan. With the numbers that are in the union plan, because that particular, um. Plan is just a little bit different than the non-union plan with the numbers of the co-pays and such. That one in particular is trending, um, super close to the hard cap, the eighty twenty. With what, um, we're spending compared to what they're spending and what we could technically push back to them. And so there is an option to make that just the, um, a one plan that they could choose and then utilize the hard cap. And then another particular option, um, that was offered was just to keep, um, and then just keep the HRA with that as well. Um, and then have three different, um, potential plans. So have one with just, um, and then you could have different contribution levels based on, um, like employee contribution rates depending on what plan they offered. And a lot of this will have to be some discussion. Like I said, there's, um, different options. They are reaching out to, um, Mesa. That was, um, under Sheriff Lowe had, um, given a quote to Jody, um, that they had received. Someplace else, an undersheriff had given him that down, I forget, was it Westbury, Ogumon County, maybe? And so they reached out to Mesa, um, to get a quote from them. So we are trying to, you know, branch out and see where else we can get. We did reach out to the Blues to see if they will quote us. Of course, in order to get a quote, they do take our utilization for the last two years and our utilization is probably gonna kill us no matter what. So brush your fingers. Priority did also say that it doesn't really matter what the utilization, what the other rates are gonna come back at, they're not gonna budge. So, um, yeah, it's just really gonna be, um, a tiered plan is definitely going to probably be in our future. It's just more or less what our tiered plan is going to look like. So where, what I'm basically now going to kind of ask you guys is. Where would you like us to, um, explore further? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. Next meeting, we do have, um, we're trying to schedule, um, the underwriter for Priority Health. He has, they have offered for one of them to come and speak to you. I believe his name is Eric. He has offered, is more than willing to come to you guys and talk about what's driving the, um, the cost to go up? What's driving this renewal? Where the increases are coming from? And have any questions that you guys have answered? Another thing is that we have our wage and salary committee that is more than willing to, um, help. Give some guidance to, um, you know, if you guys give a list of A, B, C, D, E kind of things that, um, that they would. You would like them to discuss, to staff or go through. That is also obviously off, available too. So if you, for guidance now, about what you, what decisions you would like us. Go out and look for.
Um, I think at this point for me, it's just knowing what our options are. Because with that kind of increase, I know I've talked to Jody a few times. And one of the things I had asked her is a percentage against payroll. And that's on eighteen percent. That increase is about eighteen percent of our payroll.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um. I'd like to do either one of two ways. Come up with some plans and poll our employees to see which ones they prefer. Or poll our employees and see what's important to them in our healthcare plans and see if we can incorporate that in our. Whenever we come up with a result of this. And I think it's important to, to poll our employees and.
I would agree.
Help figure this out.
Because it's, they're the ones that are gonna be mostly affected by decisions. Yes.
I would like to make my decision based on the collective intelligence of the board and the employees. My recommendation would be to give us three options from the wage and salary committee. The options I think would be amenable to us, be able to give us a better chance to make a better decision. Those are my thoughts.
Noel, do we know when, like, we may have numbers per se?
Um, we have, um, really rough numbers at the moment for, like I said, the renewal and.
Right.
For a, um. One of the qualified plans. So they are going to get, um, the other one together. When we discussed with them on Monday, when they first brought the idea of the qualified plan for us. So they're gonna get that, um, those other numbers to us here as soon as they can. So, um, once we have that, then we can hopefully get that information to you. And then.
Any else have any questions?
Thank you, Noel, for your time.
Yeah, it's definitely, um, I know how heavy all of this is. The minute it came out, I'll tell you, it was kind of a. It weighed heavy on, it's weighed heavy on our office for a long time because we knew that one day this was gonna come. So the day that it actually came, you know, it took a few days for it to kind of sink in that it was here. And so it's a, and I know how hard it, it's weighing on everybody here. So, um, it's not, it's not going to be an easy, it's not gonna be an easy year for everybody. And so we're gonna try our hardest. I know everybody's gonna try their hardest to figure out what is going to be the best that we're gonna be able to. Be able to continue and to, to be able to afford to, so.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Thank you.
With no other items on our agenda, we will adjourn. Sure.
Hey, you didn't ask her. He's just saying you.
And my controller, Tracy Baker. Deb Looney, Roscommon County Commission on Aging. And this, um, the question proposed about the, the weekend meals. I just want to let you know that when I took over last year in October. I, I've been with the agency for years, but not in that position, of course. So, um, as I was learning different things, I will tell you, back in March. Came across an issue where I had to make a phone call to NEMSCA asking a question. And the question was, how many meals were people allowed to take out? One person. And, um, I asked specifically about the weekend meals. I was two days, two meals, whatever. And I was told by Lauren Sowers. She add, well, I wasn't told, she said, what do you mean about taking out meals? And I said, why, I need to know how many meals a person is allowed to take out for the weekend. And she said that none. That as of May of twenty three, our agency had, um. Well, all the agencies in, uh, Region Nine were asked the same question about doing the carryout meals. There is only one other agency in the twelve in Region Nine that is currently doing the meals. Everyone else had refused to. They decided not to do it because of the funding. So, um. At that time, from May of twenty three and March, we were non-compliant. So we had to come up with something. I couldn't just stop the meals immediately. People were used to getting them, they were depending on them. So we gave them to April first to come up with some kind of a solution, which meant that if they would, uh. Agree to do an assessment. That we could then provide if they qualified like a Meals on Wheels. That's where the funding was coming from. Those meals were coming out of that fund. So. Like I said, that's when we were just following what the previous director and, uh, the meal coordinator had determined last year. That that's how they wanted it to happen.
I can give a little more input on, on that. So back in COVID, when COVID was here, uh, people couldn't go into the centers to, to have their meals. And so those folks that were not homebound, you know, you are your congregate people that go into your centers. Those folks could go to the centers and receive what was deemed as a carryout meal. Okay. Um, as those COVID restrictions were lifted, people were coming back into the centers. That provision was still in place, um, for these, these carryout meals. Um, a lot of folks in the beginning weren't taking them. It was just kind of more of an all of a sudden, we saw this huge influx of these meals going out. So much so that in a six month period, we, there was over twelve hundred meals that went out, um, for carryout. October to March of this year. Um, and uncovering what had happened in that prior administration. The governments got together and I can't tell you which one made the final decision and, or who the name is. But they had decided that because of these carryout meals, they were impacting the funding so drastically. On the congregate that they moved it to a home delivered meal or a Meals on Wheels. Because it was not staying in the congregate setting, it was being taken out. Once they did that, that started October one. Again, not being part of that administrative decision, nobody knew we were supposed to have stopped. Because the Meals on Wheels funding can't support the carryout meals. That would come all from the general fund. Our budget is not budgeted for a carryout meal program. It, it, it just is not. We, we don't have that flexibility at this time. Part of the, um, review process was, we had talked with, you know, um, some people at NEMSCA. Talked with some people elsewhere and said, you know, you could do a program where they, they paid the entire cost of that meal. I'm gonna tell you right now, with, with what we currently have in place, a congregate meal is over ten dollars and thirty seven cents. A meal. That does not include what is going to be the containers and so on and so forth. So if we were to do this, a carryout meal program, participate in this program. We're gonna need to hire more administrative staff in order to make sure we're in compliance with NEMSCA. That's gonna take some money from the budget that we just do not have. It's also going to require more work, um, on the employees who are currently in, um, your kitchens. Because we can't commingle, right? We have to be very careful. If, if, if we said, okay, great, we're gonna go ahead and offer this and they're gonna pay the entire cost of it. We can't commingle. So now you're looking at having meals prepaid for. You must pay for your meal before you can pick it up, before it's even cooked. Um, in order to make sure that we stabilize our budget. I mean, I'm gonna be honest, that budget was a mess when I came in. It was not good. And, um, I feel very strongly that it is our responsibility to do what's right with the money that is entrusted into us. And take that very seriously. So looking at different options of how we can provide these meals. Has not been something on the back burner. That has been something that we talk about on the regular. Uh, we've taken it to the board. The board had asked a committee to come together, look at some possible outcomes of what we could do in order to accommodate. These carryout meals and they again. Struck up with it. We just don't know how we're gonna be able to make that happen. Um. They decided to, um, go forward with what they call a restaurant voucher system. Where you partner with restaurants, um, the government kicks in a certain portion of money. And they can go in with a voucher into a restaurant and receive a meal at a, at a much lower rate. Um, that is not something that our area restaurant owners were comfortable with, um, at, at the time. And I don't know which ones were contacted and which ones weren't. But, so I don't want it to have any bias on any of the restaurants in our area. I mean, I, I don't want that to, to happen. But again, um, food costs are up. Also, all the way. Also, all the way across are up everywhere. And um We we will always, 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 always provide meals for those who Who truly need them, who desperately need them. Those who are homebound need those meals. Um, Our first priority in our list of of uh services is our Meals on Wheels um people. And then that goes down into our services. So when I'm, when I'm looking at that and I say, okay, we're we're Meals on Wheels, now we're services. We have people on hold That receive services. Because we don't have, one, the manpower or the financial resources to accommodate that. Federal funding for both the um Meals on Wheels program, congregate programs, And our in-home service programs are decreasing significantly. Where I'm I'm expecting, and I don't have those full numbers, but I'm expecting almost a hundred thousand dollar cut to our funding. Where 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 do I take that from? Right? Um, so I I wanted to put that in in front of you to let you know, we have diligently worked To try to solve the problem. We have so much so as gone to say, if you are gonna go without a meal And you're used to taking a carryout meal home, contact the office. I'd be happy to go and buy somebody a a frozen meal at the family fair. I'll do, I I I mean, I I've got no problem doing that. But to hire staff To incur more of of those costs against the agency, I don't think that that would be an appropriate decision. I I, I just don't feel that that would be right, especially when we have people on hold who are not receiving services at home. I wanted to kind of clarify that, give you some feedback um on this situation. That yes, the carryout meal program did change at the government level. We, as an agency, decided to follow suit with that and not participate in that program because we couldn't afford to do it. It was without, it it was not in our budget parameters. We just could not do it. Um, that unfortunately Process did not um follow accordingly. And that prior uh team uh just just didn't put that into place. So we had to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Yeah, um, the only concern I was wondering about is, does any food ever get wasted? I mean, because people aren't getting that that's People have been you used to getting a certain number, now we're cutting back or?
Right. So um, we're, as far as waste goes, um, that, I I don't think that there is
You you understand what I'm saying is people are asking for meals and they're not getting them and we still have them.
Well, we adjust the meals accordingly um to to how many meals um are are being Served.
Okay.
Um, any meal and that is being made, and let's say you're in this congregate setting, you're in a center. And you have all of this meal leftover that gets made into frozen meals.
Okay, that that's
Which are then used um to send home to those homebound people.
Weekend meals.
Whereas
But the weekend meals, I understand that's what's getting taken away.
Not for our homebound.
No.
Okay, okay.
Not
Yes. Yeah, the the homebound is is always the number one priority um of of the agency. And I mean, it has to stay that way. Uh, so we, you know.
Yeah, I'm just wondering process, and I'm sure a lot of people here wanted the same thing. I I mean, I would
Yeah.
That's the first thing that came to mind.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, they they definitely, as those um meals have been finished served. They start making these, what they call these trays with all of the leftover meals.
They get seven meals a week, a half gallon of milk. And um, if there is a plus one, a caregiver, a spouse, whatever, uh, that person is also covered. So we're not just talking about the our Meals on Wheels people, but they're taken care of.
That's great, good idea. You can't have two people in the same house not getting fed.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I've been appointed by the board to be the CEO of representative, and I can assure the board and the public that We have an exceptional board. I know there's a lot of controversy in regards to a lot of questions, but we must follow the rule of NEMSCA. We possibly lose our funding. I can't reiterate that enough. You must follow the rules. Thanks, Deborah. Thanks, Tracy.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
This meeting will be adjourned. Our regular meeting will start at ten o'clock. Twenty-four at ten AM to order. Mr. Russo? Roll call, please. Olson.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
Move, manager.
Second.
Discussion. Um, I believe we are pulling one of the appointments. Um, one for Sherry Samotaro out of our board packet.
For the Air Force.
Yeah.
Move, manager.
Roll call. Ostergren.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milver.
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda. In our consent packet, we have meeting minutes from July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, regular board meeting. Class A in Claims and Accounts totaling eight hundred and twenty-one thousand forty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Correspondences um A through L, which were the Michigan Community Capital twenty twenty-three Impact Report Letters to the Board of Commissioners. MAC Legislative Updates, Clinton County Resolution, MSU Report, and an Eagle Application in West Twin Lake.
We get discussion on that?
Motion to accept.
Motion we made, manager.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I'd like to also discuss, there was a letter from Jim Seitz, an email with quite, who is a Retired engineer from Dal Corning uh with quite a bit of information that, of course, we already know. The uh Lake Level Control Structure on Higgins Lake, the LLC, the LLCs there. Uh, and the opening, permanent opening is not allowing Higgins Lake to be properly maintained. And uh And I mentioned earlier in the work session, we are, I believe, three point five six inches below legal level. Old Lake is at legal level, Lake St. Helens over. We got a problem on Higgins Lake and and uh Mr. Seitz was kind enough to send us all that information. I want to make sure that that correspondence is recognized.
I did read that information. I actually responded to him.
Excellent. What did you say, manager?
I just basically said, thank you for the information. I understand some of it, some of it I don't, because I don't have a degree in that. And
Thank you.
Roll call. Do we need a roll call on that? No. Um, also in the consent agenda, we had the
You have a motion in a second.
Oh.
Vote, whether you do all eyes or
Okay. Everybody in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
All right.
Okay. Um, clerk register deed update.
Okay. Um, so the Minutes Book Project, all the Minutes Books have been scanned. They came in on Wednesday and did that. I had come back After hours because it took a little bit longer scanning the bound books. Um, so now we're on to the next stage of that. I have a call with them this afternoon on that. And so, you know, what everybody is really looking for is the election update. So we did have our election last uh Tuesday, August sixth. We had a total of seven thousand three hundred and eighty-five ballots cast. So that was about thirty percent turnout, just under thirty-one percent turnout. For the election, of those, six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight ballots were election day and AV ballots. And five hundred and forty-seven voters participated in early voting. The um election was certified yesterday. The Board of Canvassers had to reconvene yesterday to certify the election. And um I did receive an inquiry regarding a possible recount In one township. So that deadline, now that the election has been certified, that deadline would be on Monday, August eighteenth, so six days. But uh if there is a recount request made, it could not be performed until after The State Board of Canvassers certifies the election statewide. So that would put us the end of August, beginning of September timeframe, if that were to happen. And um, of course, the township involved would be the one responsible for covering the costs of the recount if that happened. Which would be overseen by the Board of Canvassers, the County Board of Canvassers. Um, yesterday was the filing deadline for uh proposals to appear on the November ballot. We do have a few Townships who have um put forward proposals. And then um we have the one county one, I believe, is all we had. So um, but now that we have finished with August, we continue to move on into November and preparing for that. So Now I have to go into the qualified voter file, move all of the winning candidates that were nominated in August forward to November to be elected. So nobody was elected except for precinct delegates. Those were the only elected people in the August election. Everybody else is was nominated and they will move forward to be placed on the November ballot. And um that will also include nonpartisan positions as well. Uh, the state legislature has until September sixth to decide to place anything on the ballot. And I have to have ballots and programming to the local clerks by September twenty-first. So as you can see, we kind of have a a small window there to get everything done. So we can't actually print ballots until after September sixth, but they have to be printed into our clerks Within two weeks after that. And we have to have programming ready. So um if we do end up having a recount, it could delay our printing our ballots. Um, our printer is great that we work with, and they always make sure that our clerks have the ballots on time. So if we had a recount. Which we had to experience that a couple of years ago. Um, so it was, we were on the wire. They're like, okay, can we print, can we print, can we print? So um, we participated in National Night Out for the first time that I've been in office. So it was a lot of fun. My staff came out and was helpful in supporting that and ended up all kinds of goodies. And there was a good attendance. So kudos to our Sheriff's Department for continuing that tradition. And that was all I had.
Shall I like uh or online? Thank you.
Public comments? Or any public comment?
Uh, we have one. Name is Emil.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, my name is Emil Bellinbov. I'm calling from Princeville, Hawaii on vacation. It's now uh four oh eight in the morning here. Uh, so you can tell that uh I was very anxious to attend this meeting. Uh, I I wanna, I express a couple of things. I noticed that Debbie and uh Tracy got up and testified during the work session. Uh, a little bit of what they said, uh, I need some clarification. One is uh, uh, they did say uh Uh, that uh they gave us two whole weeks, okay, to prepare for not being able to take a meal out of the center. And that was from uh March fifteenth through uh uh April the first. At the same time, they uh uh told us that we couldn't take anymore. Uh, uh, or they told us on March the fifteenth that nothing was gonna change. It was just a matter of funding. So that all they had to do was switch things around. And then they changed it at that that very same weekend Uh, so that we couldn't take a meal home. So that started our uh disbelieving of what they were telling us. The next thing they told us was they had a letter from Mary Frye signed by John Olsen That they weren't ever gonna take another meal out of there as of March of twenty-three. Uh, after uh finally getting a copy of that letter, uh, it does not say that, okay? It it says uh from uh somebody much higher up in the state than NEMSCA. What would happen if we uh threw these take-home meals in with grab and goes Uh, that we were doing dur- during COVID, what would happen? And uh, they stated at that time that the cost would be so prohibitive, they wouldn't be able to do it anymore. And then we found out uh through their conversations, and even today, they said it's ten dollars and thirty-seven cents Uh, per meal, and it's just cost prohibitive. Well, if you take their twelve hundred meals and multiply it by two, to, because that was over a six-month period. Uh, make it twenty-four hundred meals and multiply it by ten dollars, and I believe their number was thirty-seven cents today. Uh, uh, you come up with a figure that's less than thirty thousand dollars to solve this whole problem. But instead of doing that, they have, they're banking on this situation where uh Uh, they're putting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars away into a porthole for a rainy day fund. Thirty thousand dollars of that could have been used for this program. Mark says, well, we can't do it. It's illegal. It's against NEMSCA's rules. Well, they even said today, NEMSCA says, yeah, you could do it, okay? Uh, but you can't use NEMSCA's funding to handle that. Well, that, isn't that what the one point six two million dollars is for? Uh, Tracy says, oh, we're gonna run out of money, okay? Well, last year she said, uh, we're gonna be two hundred thousand dollars short. And the next thing you know, in January, we're at three hundred thousand dollars to the good. That's a five hundred thousand dollar swing. I don't believe her forecast anymore. Uh, she told me one time that she forecast a ten percent decrease in funding And a ten percent increase in spending. That's all all built into her budget. Uh, in case something goes wrong. Well, that's a big swing. Okay, that's that's twenty percent. Uh, that you got built in in case something goes wrong. Well, I'm telling you That there are people going home on the weekends that should have been received a Meals on Wheels Uh, to go home with, and they're not. And I'm saying it's their fault because they don't want to do it, okay? It's it's not a matter of funding. We can go to the local businesses and get thirty thousand dollars from the local businesses. Everybody realizes the need of people uh taking a a meal home. They say that they're so so upset uh that this might hurt their funding for Meals on Wheels program for those who are homebound. We have a man here today up on your screen, Dennis Warner, okay, who is Uh, uh, homebound. He was getting Meals on Wheels until they decided he didn't qualify anymore. I I'll let him speak more of that if he likes. Uh, I'm saying uh, this is the the fox in the hen house. These people don't want to have a program for vouchers because they don't want to do the work. They don't want to have a program for taking a meal home because they it doesn't fit their narrative, how how it should work. If we have one point six two million dollars uh for next year's funding just from our tax base. Uh, they they should be able to fit it into their budget to do, to put that thing together. I I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your support. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other? Do we have any visitors? Unfinished business, Lake St. Helens Special Assessment Project costs. Is anybody up there?
Hi, this is Amanda Knudsen um with Vahy Schultz, and I'm joined with Luke O'Brien from Spicer Group. Um, I have a brief PowerPoint to share with the board. Um, just give me one second to share my screen. All right, can everyone see the full screen with the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so as you're aware, and oh, Luke O'Brien from Spicer Group just made me aware So as you're aware, Luke O'Brien from Spicer Group just made me aware he's not able to unmute himself. He's going to be helping with this conversation, so if it's possible to give him that ability. Perfect.
Thank you.
So as you all know, we're here to discuss the assessment role in project costs for Lake St. Helen. This is very similar to what the board heard for Houghton Lake. So just a quick refresher of the process so far. The delegated authority, Chase Shepkey, did hold a public hearing to review the special assessment role in project costs on July 31st. We sent the mail-in, all property owners within the special assessment district prior to that hearing. That's required under Part 307. We also held a public informational meeting in May to go over this information with property owners. So once property owners were mailed notice of the public hearing, they submitted additional information and questions through the dedicated call-in line, email address, and website that have been set up for the lake levels. This was great. This was exactly what we wanted. As this information came in, the lake levels team investigated each piece of new information and made changes to the proposed assessment role prior to the July 31st hearing. We did receive additional information and questions during the hearing. There was a great public comment during that July 31st hearing. We did look into the additional information that was received at the hearing, but there were no additional changes to the assessment role made as a result of that information. Similar to Houghton Lake, we've provided the board with a few different documents to help summarize the changes that were made between the time that notices were mailed to property owners and the July 31st public hearing. You have all of this in front of you, but just, I really quickly wanted to explain. You should have a sheet that shows text in different colors. It's just a one-page, and that gives kind of a summary of the different types of changes that were made to the role based on property owner correspondence that we received. So there's four categories of changes. The first is in orange. Those are changes in the property type factor. Luke can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but my understanding is that there was only one change related to that factor, and it involved a property that was originally assigned as commercial. The landowner contacted us and let us know they were not commercial, and so we removed the commercial factor from that property. The next kind of category of changes were in the access type factor. So as the board is aware, we have different types of access. There's direct and indirect, and then different tiers of access within each of those. So these changes related to, you know, I think they were mostly indirect access parcels where property owners contacted us and let us know that they had more restricted access than we initially anticipated. And so there were some small adjustments made in those parcels. Next, we had a handful of changes that were made based on parcel splits and combinations and the way that parcels are treated by township assessors. I'll let Luke jump in if I get any of this wrong, but I believe, you know, some of these were splits that just went into, splits or combos, excuse me, that just went into effect this year that we weren't initially aware of. And so this just involved updates related to that, that treatment by township assessors. The last category of changes we have is a little bit different. These related to the keyhole condo shared access parcels. And a handful of these parcels were initially inadvertently assigned an assessment of $0. As you can imagine, with this complex of an assessment methodology, there are lots of formulas that go into the spreadsheets to create the role. And so my understanding is that there was a small error in one of the formulas that resulted in this. So this change was just made to update these to reflect the accurate assessment amount for these parcels. I would note that the parcels that were impacted by this change were sent a follow-up notice to inform them of their correct assessment amount. And so this is my last slide. This is just a summary of the changes that have been made in your typical assessment amounts from the time the mailing went out to now. So you know, your average direct access parcel was originally set at about $316 total. On the current revised rule that you have in front of you, it's about $304 total assessment. That's about $152 a year. So those went down just a little bit as a result of these changes. And then a typical indirect access parcel on the original rule was about $237. That's gone down to about $228 total or $114 per year. That is all I have in terms of a PowerPoint. I did just want to know, I know you all have a handful of documents that were provided last week. Those include the computation of project costs, that summary sheet that I referenced with the explanation as to the different types of changes, a spreadsheet that shows those changes that were made to the role after the mailing notices went out. So that spreadsheet shows each parcel where we made a change, and it shows you the original assessment information and then the revised role information for each of those parcels. You also have a full assessment role with color coding for those parcels that had changes, and then the proposed resolution approving the costs and role and a financing resolution. And I'm happy to answer any questions, as is Luke.
Do we have any questions? I think I don't see this. So in all the emails, you, you did state that any of the emails that came in with questions regarding their parcels, all of those were cleared up?
Yes, that is correct. And we made, we made changes as a result of that correspondence.
Okay. Anybody else with any questions? No comment. I don't think anybody has any other further comments or questions regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
New business. We don't have anything listed there. So we are on to motions and resolutions. Ready? Yep. Motion number one, move to reappoint Ken Melvin to the Veterans Affairs Committee for a four-year term beginning August 14th, 2024 through December 31st, 2028. Discussion. Roll call. Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Motion carried. Question number two, move to reappoint Heath Neiman, Director of Veterans Affairs, to the Veterans Affairs Committee for a four-year term beginning August 14th, 2024 through December 31st, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Russo.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes. Can we just do eyes? All these.
What?
All these motions, we have to do roll call on each one. We can't just do eyes. Total agreement? No, I'm just curious. I'm just asking.
We're doing roll call.
Okay.
Thank you. Censor.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
And motion number three, we removed. So next motion, move to approve at the request of Treasurer Rebecca Reagan, an increase in bounced check fees from $25 to $30 effective August 14th, 2024. Second. Discussion.
Didn't we miss number three?
We took that off. That.
That was.
That was one we removed.
Oh, I apologize.
Roll call. Gilbert.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to authorize Commissioner Rex Wolfson to enter an agreement on behalf of the Board of Commissioners with Michigan Consulting and Environmental for the purpose of developing a materials management plan for Roscommon County. Total project cost estimated $64,000 to be offset through materials management plan.
So moved, and thank you for you've done, Rex.
Second. Discussion. Yes.
And I'd like to pair with Commissioner Russo said, thanks, Rex, for your work on this. I know it's been a lot of, lot of effort.
Yes, a lot of hard work.
Really, I did think some of this is we just got lucky and found a good outfit.
Anyway.
Roll call, please. Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to approve the 2023 County of Roscommon Audit as presented by Tyler J. Waters, CPA, on July 24th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Ostergrin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to approve the appointment of Jessica Gilbert as Roscommon County E-911 Director at an annual salary of $59,966.40, Grade VII, Step 2.
So moved.
Discussion.
I'd like to jump in and say that I think we have a, we have a really good pick for the authority, you know, 911. I think she's going to do really good. Jumped right in there. Thank you.
Roll call. Gilbert.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Got to get ready now. Move to adopt resolution number 2024-08-01, resolution approving comp of costs and assessment role for Lake St. Helen. Whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners and its delegated authority have jurisdiction to maintain the normal lake levels of Lake St. Helen under Part 307 of Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, Act 451 of 1994 as amended. And whereas a special assessment district was established by the Roscommon County Circuit Court for Lake St. Helen located in Higgins Township and Richfield Township, Roscommon County, Michigan, under Part 307. And whereas the delegated authority mailed notice of a public hearing to review the computation of costs of a lake level project and corresponding special assessment role consistent with the requirements of Part 307, MCL 324.307142B. And whereas after notice of the public hearing was mailed to property owners within the special assessment district, the delegated authority made revisions to the special assessment role. And whereas the delegated authority held a public hearing on July 31st, 2024 to review the computation of costs and special assessment, MCL 324.307142. And whereas, following the public hearing, the delegated authority made additional revisions to the special assessment role, MCL 324.307143. And whereas the delegated authority presented the special assessment role and computation of costs to the board for final approval at its meeting on August 14th, 2024. Whereas the board has reviewed the computation of costs and special assessment role presented by the delegated authority. And whereas, MCL 324.307224 requires annual expenditures of over $10,000 to be approved by a county board of commissioners. And whereas the board previously approved annual expenditures of over $10,000 for activities to maintain the normal levels of Lake St. Helen, and now finds it necessary to reaffirm said approval. Now therefore be it resolved, computation of costs and special assessment role. The board approves the computation of costs of the lake level project and the special assessment role as presented by the delegated authority and attached to this resolution. The special assessment role with the assessments listed shall be final and conclusive unless appealed in a court within 15 days of the adoption of this resolution. MCL 324.307144, the Roscommon County Clerk shall forward to the delegated authority a copy of this resolution so that action can be instituted by Roscommon County in an expedient manner. Over $10,000 expenditure. The board approves annual expenditures of over $10,000 for activities to maintain the normal levels of Lake St. Helen, including the maintenance and repair of lake level infrastructure. This express authorization to spend more than $10,000 annually shall authorize annual expenditures of over $10,000 for all years in which work for the activities authorized herein continues to occur. The expenditures authorized herein shall not exceed the amount of the computation of costs of the lake level project without prior approval of the board. Previous revolations, all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as the same may be in conflict herewith are hereby rescinded. You have a motion?
The movement chair.
Certainly.
Discussion.
Yes.
Well, the seventh whereas down. Presented on August 14th.
Yeah. Roll call, please. Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
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 Move to adopt resolution number 202. Resolution approving. Project cost. Whereas pursuant to. As amended. By order dated 29/8. Establish the normal lake level of Lake St. Helen. Founded however, that said level be lowered level of not less than 1,000. 75 feet. Whichever shall occur first. And two, by order dated December 15th, 2023, establish the boundaries of the Lake St. Helen Lake Level Special Assessment District for the purpose of financing lake level improvements and activities necessary to establish and maintain the lake levels. And whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners has appointed Shepkey Consulting LLC as the delegated authority within the meaning of Part 307 to take such actions as are necessary to maintain the normal level of Lake St. Helen. And whereas, the delegated authority has caused to be prepared a computation of costs for the first phase of the improvements necessary to maintain the normal level of Lake St. Helen in the amount of $350,000, and has prepared a special assessment role assessing such amount against parcels of land in the special assessment district that benefit from the project. And whereas pursuant to notice given as required by Part 307, the delegated authority has caused a hearing on the cost of the project and the special assessment role to be held on July 31st, 2024, and following the hearing, approve the cost of the project and the special assessment role. Whereas the delegated authority has proposed that the special assessment district issue bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed $350,000 to pay all or part of the cost of the project and the county pledge its full faith and credit to the payment of the bonds. And whereas, Part 307 requires that the Board of Commissioners approve the cost of the project and the special assessment role by resolution, and also approve the issuance of the bonds by the special assessment district. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Roscommon as follows. The special assessment district. The special assessment district shall be designated and hereafter referred to as the Lake St. Helen Lake Level Special Assessment District. The appointment of Shepkey Consulting LLC as the delegated authority within the meaning of Part three oh seven and the actions of the Shepkey Consulting LLC as delegated authority to date are all ratified and confirmed. The cost of the project, the computation of costs of the project and the special assessment role for the special assessment district in the forms presented to this meeting are hereby approved. The special assessment role with the assessments listed shall be final and conclusive unless appealed in a court within fifteen days of the adoption of this resolution. The Board of Commissioners hereby approves the issuance of the bonds by the special assessment district pursuant to Part three oh seven to pay all or part of the cost of the project, the bonds to be payable from the special assessments for the project and authorizes the delegated authority to take all actions on behalf of the special assessment district as are necessary to issue and sell the bonds as provided in Part three oh seven. The special assessment role shall be payable in installments in amounts sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds. Pursuant to the authorization provided in section three zero seven zero five of Part three oh seven, provided that the bonds are issued in a principal amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners by a two-thirds vote of its members-elect does hereby irrevocably pledge the full faith and credit of the County of Roscommon for the prompt payment of the principal of and interest on the bonds and does agree that in the event that property owners in the special assessment district shall fail or neglect to account to the county treasurer of the County of Roscommon for the amount of any such special assessment installment and interest due, then the amount thereof shall be immediately advanced from county funds and the county treasurer is directed to immediately make such advancement to the extent necessary. In the event that pursuant to said pledge of full faith and credit, the County of Roscommon advances out of county funds or any part of the principal of and interest due on the bonds, it shall be the duty of the county treasurer or and on behalf of the County of Roscommon to take all actions and proceedings and pursue all remedies permitted or authorized by law for the reimbursement of such sum so paid. The chairperson of the board, the county administrator, the county clerk, the county treasurer, and any other official of the county or any one or more of them are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary or desirable for the issuance of the bonds and to execute any documents or certificates necessary to complete the issuance of the bonds, including but not limited to any applications including the Michigan Department of Treasury, application for state treasurer's approval to issue long-term securities, any waivers, certificates, receipts, orders, agreements, instruments, and any certificates relating to federal or state securities law, securities laws, rules, or regulations, and to participate in the preparation of a preliminary official statement and a final official statement for the bonds and to sign such documents on behalf of the county and give any approvals necessary therefore. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as the same may be in conflict here with are hereby rescinded.
Move.
Second.
Discussion.
Easy for her to say.
Roll call please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Yes.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
We are now on to committee reports. Commissioner Astor Green.
I have none.
Commissioner Milburn.
I was with Commissioner. Rex there, Commissioner Wilson, on thirty-one July, attended the car show with the COA and was with National Night Out, nice, nice thing I said, we're for sheriff.
Commissioner Russo.
Nine-one-one Authority Board Meeting, and Personnel, what's you?
Um, I attended obviously our agenda meeting on August first, personnel meetings and updates. Um, my Michigan Works Region seven B on Friday, July twenty-seventh. And then I've been helping out with the Holton Lakes Special Assessment District of receiving and documenting all prepayments.
I have nothing.
Who attended the meeting?
It's a given.
Um, board comment.
I, uh.
Commissioner Astor Green.
Thank you. Um, I listened to Mr. Cotterman earlier, and I like him, I, I think he's a nice guy. So please don't, I hope he doesn't take anything wrong, but, uh, he thinks the USGS data will disappear, uh, once we're off USGS. And that's, that's not true, it will not. Uh, USGS historical data on our lakes will be. Hi-fi, I've confirmed that with Chase before. So that information's not gonna be lost. Mr. Cotterman's gonna have to learn a, a new reporting system and a new way to look at things, like whenever we get a new piece of software, I hate it, I hate it. But you gotta go through the pain and the process and learn and outwork. And if, uh, they could be even emailing that data, which I understand they're gonna be able to do, that should make it even easier for him. I know that Chase Chunky's working on the site to do that. And, uh, the USGS, uh, data is still available, going to be available when hi-fi takes over. I'd also like to add, uh, he doesn't think too much of hi-fi, but they're an approved vendor and they're gonna actually be better because there's gonna be more sensors on our lakes that is going to be able to average the data. Is it supposed to take from one side of the lake where the wind can blow one day and blow away the next? And you're, so you're not gonna be able to manage, uh, the lake level, you're gonna be able to manage lake levels much, much better with having two sensors on the lake. Uh, Holton Lake, and I heard earlier on the, uh, uh, petitions that are gonna be reached, I understand that the two-thirds petition drive to the levels on Holden have been reached, uh, but they haven't been delivered to us yet. And as I've mentioned in previous meetings, uh, the petitions are gonna have to be verified and according to our past resolutions and statutes, the petition is gonna have to pay us a ten dollar, thousand dollar fee for us to start the validation process. A validation, uh, validation is very laborious and time-consuming and I hope we can assure the petitioners that we're gonna do our best to accommodate all their efforts. It's gonna take a little bit of time and I just wanna make sure that they know, uh, the petitioners know that we're gonna do our best as a board and, uh, the people, they're gonna have to be doing the validation on all those signatures and properties. Thank you.
Commissioner Milburn.
I'd just like to thank the public for being to this meeting today. Thank you.
Commissioner Russo.
I need to give a shout out to Jody Darlin and Joe in the office for blacking. Whenever you. They have been the last few weeks, thank you very much.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes. I'd like to speak out about the lawsuit that has caused us to lose our extremely qualified delegated authority for Higgins Lake. These are my opinions and feelings. This is a lawsuit about Senate Bill zero six-six-two, which has been signed by the governor but is not in effect yet. People named in this lawsuit is by design or choice. There is no law stating who is to be named in a lawsuit. Shepkey Consulting LLC has always, as directed by the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, managed the Higgins Lake lake level in a manner to achieve the legal level on Higgins Lake. This lawsuit in the least has caused Chase stress for family and business. This is tough for someone that finds pride in one's work, treating people respect, morals and ethics are important, especially when the attack comes from people who seem not to put those things on a high priority list. Thank you.
Um, I'm very sad and upset regarding the new lawsuit that was filed against the Board of Commissioners and Shepkey Consulting LLC along with Chase Shepkey. I truly believe that we were all headed in the right direction. And we were working for a solution. I know some say, don't take it personal. It's hard. Especially when he has spent so many hours trying to move in a better direction. In my opinion, all of this is, all that this has done is slowed down the process that has been allowing us to move forward. Without the delegated authority, that knowledge and background, it will now take more time and research for us to all make good decisions. Public comment, do we have any public comment? Yes.
Bragel Tensky Supervisor for Richfield Township. I would like to inform the board and everybody in this room, on Saturday, between one and one-thirty, we are having a Army Ranger reunion at our airport. Uh, we do have parachutists that are scheduled to jump between one and one-thirty, of course, that's gonna be weather dependent. We have the National Guard coming out for static display, uh, we have several law enforcement. And of course, our emergency unit, so anybody would like to come out, uh, I extend that invitation, it should be a good time. We would expect to have between forty and fifty retired Army Rangers. And this was all organized by one of our citizens. So I'd like to just extend that up opportunity, anybody that wants to come out and witness the parachute jump and the, uh, presentation of the flag and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Sherry McGee, seven-one-eight-four Emery, I have some letters I would like to hand out to the board. These are letters that we handed out to the property owners of Emery and concerning the Consumers Energy Project. The top letter is the one with two mailed out to the, uh, property owners. The second letter is a reminder of our meeting on the seventeenth at the Roscommon Township Hall. The top letter, uh, was, uh, drafted with the help of our attorney, Ackerman and Ackerman. We will be having our attorney there as well. We have invited Consumers Energy. They do not wish to attend. We have many questions. There's also going to be a letter addressed to Consumers Energy uh, asking certain questions. And some of those questions are in that letter. Uh, and that letter will be available, uh, and signed by the property owners on the seventeenth. Right now that letter is still in draft from our attorney. Uh, also, each individual property owner has been asked to write their own personal letter of how this high voltage line will affect them personally. And, and we're going to attach all that all together and send that to Consumers Energy. And uh, I believe that's all I got. But we've been, we're still working hard at this. Continue on, I guess. And I do wanna say, thank you, board. You guys do things professionally. I was at a meeting that was not professional. And I do appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Name's Jeffrey Max Lloy, I'm also with the Emery Group and Sherry give you all the information, um, that we've been working with. The last. The last, uh, the last you give was one that we sent out to, a reminder. And there's a list of everybody on Emery Road that we call our Emery Road Group. There's, they're, they're the people that's been working for everybody on every road. And, uh, they, some worked out a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of research. And, uh, we would, uh, we're inviting y'all to come to our meeting. It's at five-thirty on Saturday. Um, she also said that we, I sent, uh, emails out to Consumers Energy, two people. One was the representative for this area and the other one was the project manager, which we've talked to long time ago, that they actually came to the meeting, then we talked to them. We have not been able to get anything from them since, you know, since then really. But they declined because, uh, they just don't wanna talk to us. Uh, one thing I'm concerned about is there's gonna be a lot of people on Emery Road that's gonna be there. A lot of people are, are not for this. And there is a few people that has signed the contract with consumers, but they've been misled by the third party. They have been told, I, I, while I was delivering the last, last reminder, they, one, one gentleman was told by this representative that said that if they do not sign the consumers', um, contract, then consumers is gonna come take their property. They won't have any choice. And that is wrong. And this gentleman was misled, some people are told they're just gonna cut a few trees. No, they are not, they are gonna clear cut Emery Road all the way down. Not a few trees. Now, when they first approached me, they said that, that I have to get, um, a quote on how much it's gonna cost. They're gonna cut our trees down, but we gotta get a quote on if we want rocks, we wanna save, we gotta, we gotta move them ourselves if we wanna save them. And then they said we have to get, uh, quotes on removing the stones out of our own pocket. They were gonna give me three thousand dollars to ruin thirteen oaks, it's, I can't even put my arms around them. They've been here for a long, a lot longer than a lot of people and, and it's just a shame. And I do have, I've got ahold of a TV station, which we're meeting with by, uh, Friday at noon. And we're going to go to these property owners and hopefully we can get pictures of, from people's front porches. I'm gonna go stake it out and go where, where they're, where it's gonna come and show people how much devastation this is gonna do to these property owners. Where they do have an alternate route, alternate route is Waco Road. It is gonna cross eighteen, go down Waco Road, go to Reserve, all the way down to Reserve to Emery Road. They can go straight across Waco Road, then they say they can't go across state land. As they cross eighteen, Waco Road is state land. It's all state land, all the way to Reserve, all the way across Reserve, they can keep going down Reserve. I mean, uh, Waco Road, it will not bother no property owners. They're saying intimate domain, if they can use intimate domain on private property owners, why can't they use intimate domain on the government, which give them the rights to use intimate domain? It's only an eighty-foot path down through woods, which would cause a nice little road for fire suppression. I mean, it makes no sense to take all these people's property, over eighty-some of them, property, cut their trees down, ruin their whole front yards, expose them to the, to Emery Road, which is now a speedway because of its, its, you know, all the big trucks are coming down there, they're doing asphalt, they're just driving, you know, coming, just whizzing right by. But it just doesn't make sense to me. And another thing doesn't make sense, why our government took away your power? Why are they taking away our townships and our counties' power for a private owned company? It doesn't make sense, we voted you guys in to make decisions for us. And I, you've already made a decision, you don't want it down Emery Road. Why do they have that? Why did, they got more power than our government, our local government? It doesn't make sense and people need to start looking into these people. I don't care if you're Democrat or Republican, this is just ridiculous that they're taking home from property owners when they could just use state land, which they go and cut all the trees down anyways and make money off of it. So, thank you very much, and again, board, thank you for your support. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you know anybody that can help us.
Professional courtesy to you and the board, all is in handy.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy.
Any other public comment?
Vanessa Varner, Emergency Management Director for Roscommon County. I am here, uh, with information for all of you on the, uh, emergency management, uh, operations knowledge that you all approved. I, I believe I handed it out to most of you. There are flyers up, out, uh, just informational about what emergency management does for the community. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that I brought this, uh, to, uh, public comment for the opportunity for any questions and, yeah.
Thanks for the, you do a great job.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Yeah.
Fire is very, very nice.
I'll be handing these out everywhere I go, and if you guys have any recommendations for where I should go and speak, please let me know. I'll, I'll be there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Uh, we have Mr. Emile again.
Emile, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Sure. Uh, Emile Bellinbaum, longtime resident of Roscommon County. I'll try and keep the echo down. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I sent off a, a, a copy of a picture of people eating Meals on Wheels at a mushroom house event, okay, for the meals for the COA. Uh, I was told that those meals actually broke out to be less than three fifty per meal. So I want the same deal as to that ten dollars and thirty-seven cents they quoted. I want that same meal. Rex and, and Mark both went to the car show and they had available at that point in time, uh, a whole dinner and a Meals on Wheels tray that you could buy for five dollars. They didn't say anything about special people, okay, uh, uh, who were going hungry, uh, because they couldn't get their Meals on Wheels delivered. Uh, I'm, uh, I think the whole thing is, they don't wanna do it and they're not gonna do it. Uh, I think that Mark, uh, uh, yeah, he'll go and ask them, hey, do you wanna do it? They're gonna say no. Uh, we need somebody who could figure out a way to do it and put it together. Uh, I thank you for all your support and uh, uh, thanks for your time. Bye.
Thank you. Any other public comment? With that being said, um, this meeting is adjourned.